It gets moisture and it freezes in frost, it fractures my face.
They
It may not be replaced, it may
Material
One of the historic features is that you don't want to necessarily
Replace everything with brand-new material.
You want the character of a building that's aged on earth. So it's not going to be a problem with the intrusion of water in the building. It's not going to be a danger where it falls out. There could be a lot of cases where it's just going to be left in very rough condition because
Thirty.
Each of those cases has to be reviewed with Department Interior and Ship Hall. And from that overview, they're going to decide where it's appropriate, you know, what work. There are pieces that
If you recall back around Thanksgiving, we had some And they found some areas that obviously were very Are falling out.
But you can tell that that's just going to cost
More and more work. So there are areas that like cracks and other pieces that are falling out that are higher on the list of priorities. We really looked at all the exteriors being done at once. They'll have to be scaffolding. Similar to what was done down at the cathedral, similar to what was done at the post office.
The most effective way is to put that scaffolding up and do it.
Get everything done at the same time there because two or three different contractors will use that, that direction of the scaffolding. But that doesn't say we can't work around some things too. There's flexibility left here. Uh, there are some places up in that same tower where there's terracotta. Interesting thing is in nineteen eighty, there's notes on the drawings that said reattach terracotta or metal, cast iron metal that was in storage. So some of these problems have happened before. I mean, maybe they went back into the sixties and they just put it in storage when a piece was loose. So, I mean, I can't say it's not normal, it'll happen again, but obviously that's the place where you want to go, whatever might still be salvageable. And you can see some pieces, I can, this is inside the lowest level of the tower where there's areas where the, uh, cast iron has actually separated. And their plates and they've deattached themselves. These are the windows we talked about, the aluminum windows that were put back in nineteen eighty. Uh, they did something very interesting at that time. We were also geared to the indoor air quality right around that same time. So they brought air into the spaces through these little vents at the bottom of every window. And at that time, it was probably a very creative way of doing it because it brought in a little bit of leakage, which brought the fresh air into the space. It was probably uncomfortable if you sat near the window, but that was the method they used and all of the windows have that. A lot of them now either don't work anymore, they were just like a damper. Or they were covered up on the inside because they were discomfort, you know, somebody was sitting too close and they felt that draft all winter. But that tells us, you know, the vintage of it. The caulking around the windows is probably the only thing right now that is universal for all those windows. There's a few that do have a crack or they lost some gas inside the insulated panes, but they're not, uh, very many of those, there's only a handful. If we touch those windows, we'll probably go back to having to do something again with the historic side. Uh, there's other places where the masonry, uh, again, has different vintages and it's, it's not vintage, but different cuts and it's weathered differently. Uh, this one is showing one pattern versus this, that just means the two are going to weather differently. They're not necessarily wrong, and again, that goes back to that character, we're not going to replace things like that unless it's not a problem with leakage or it's going to fall out. But there are some other areas, uh, I think the next page. Oh, I'm sorry. Nope, you're out of order a little bit. Anyway, there's a couple of stones that maybe we don't have in here, well, the crack is one indication, but there are a few stones that are actually ready to fall out. I mean, there's lost enough mortar that maybe one corner is actually pushed out a little bit. And that has happened before, I know it happened on the firehouse a few years ago where a piece fell out and that's when we just replaced the parapets around the firehouse last year or the year before last. That's what happens when some of this mortar is lost because the water's going to get back in there and it's freezing thaw and it pushes every year a little bit more. It also obviously causes a lot of interior damage, which we'll show on the interiors. So there's places where we need to do, push them in, get them set again so that they don't become worse. Uh, back to the, there. Uh, stained glass windows. We surveyed all the windows and, uh, the windows themselves are generally in good shape as far as glass and letting. But, and you can see it right in this room, this last window over here, if you look about the middle or about a third up, you can see that little bow in that window right there. That's a natural cycle for stained glass window. The, the thermal changes cause that joint, it's a lead joint, to weaken. And wind pressure and different things cause that to push a little. These were retrofitted with those rods that are in there every twelve or fourteen inches. Is that provides something that the window can stabilize itself with? It was probably not their original, it was just glass originally, but that cycle of, you know, hot and cold temperatures causes that joint to bend. There's other ones that are much worse than that. We looked at them all for the same reason, it's in the budget to do what'll give us another fifty years of those windows, all right? That's probably another alternate. Some of them don't need to be done, they can just be cleaned and not removed and, and replaced. But that's just kicking that can down the road because maybe ten years from now it'll have to be done. But there's still some flexibility left in there. There's some, as this picture shows here, that are pretty severe. This is in Don King's office on the fourth floor.
Do you have a picture of the ones at the front of the building?
Yeah, and you can see how distorted that pattern is supposed to be nice and neat like this and you can see the gaps right through the glass here. So that's even gotten beyond that, that's one of those more severe ones that needs to be replaced or fixed.
So when that, if that gets replaced, it has to be replaced similar to what's there?
Yes. Actually, it could be, everything that's here just needs to be removed, taken to a shop where they can re-let everything, put it back in place.
But we can't put in a more modern, energy-efficient window that has the same characteristics?
Well, we can do things which we expected to do, you can put a, for no better term, a storm window in front of it, a plexiglass or something, you can also do it on the interior. The reason you do it on the outside is that it'll top the weather from affecting that in the future. But one thing that doesn't happen, it doesn't really provide a good energy efficiency because if you don't vent that space, you're increasing that thermal cycle. Because every time the sun hits it, that trap there and there is going to warm up and make that, and then at night it gets cold. So the venting is both to keep it from doing that, but it also affects, you know, the thermal property. But at least the plexiglass, if you want to call it that, will stop the wind from being, you know, hitting it and it'll prevent it from, you know, aging faster. Most churches today are replacing the full plexiglass over the windows because that heat built up in there was affecting the quality of the windows with a vented frame. So it still helps, but not a hundred percent.
I would imagine the fact that this is an historic site or building would minimize any attempt to change the look of the stained glass windows?
That's right. Anything we do, we have to not use energy as the reason, that's not necessarily going to be, there's plenty of ways we can do it without that, all right? But if you're sitting in that office, obviously it would be a big improvement if that window now. In this room, it's not going to make as much of a difference because of the room and the function of the room. But having something on the outside is still going to protect that window long-term and that's still a value. There's some small areas, um, outside, this is at the front steps. A lot of, a lot of cases, and this doesn't show it very well, but I think there's a change in elevation between these surfaces and at the top of the steps is the same thing. Some of this is just because we were asked to do the condition of the building, existing conditions. They should be repaired in some way. It's the same problem we have with like changing out the newer windows. This is also governed by the historic side. And one of the, one of the things that was not done for the application was that whole front entrance because those planters were never there. The planters that divide each stairway, they were not there, all right? It was one large stair right across the entire width of that, that cover, that portico. Will it be enough to say, well, if you're going to fix this? I think that's one of those things they probably will bend on and say, make the stairs safe versus make them original, all right? I don't think that is high on the list of priorities. But until we meet with Ship Hall, we don't know. That could be one of the little things that they just want to know.
I just have a question real quick about the steps. Um, does that meet the code as it relates to handicap accessibility? I know there's a ramp in the back of the building, but
Yeah, the building still qualifies or satisfies the accessibility of the rear entrance
Okay.
To the elevator. Um, you know, is it as conducive to public building, maybe, you know, more signage or anything changes, but it still qualifies as far as you have a means to get in. What's probably missing is maybe better parking for it, all right? And that's, that's something outside. Um, once you're in the building now, that qualifies, so. Would you do more on the front if you tried to put a big ramp out the front? That might create some problems where that really changes the character out front and it may be directed to something on the side, backside of the building where it's less conspicuous. One of the, the, the historic, you know, preservation requirements do not hinder you from trying to make an old building useful. You just try to do it so that it's not, you know, intrusive about the character of the building. So if we put a rooftop unit on for air conditioning, that'd be fine as long as you can't see it from the street. That type of stuff. So if I put a handicap ramp on the back, and I already have, we already have one, obviously. But if I put it somewhere else, as long as maybe considered not to be obstructing, you know, any view of the building or changing the character of the building, then you can do that. But we'd have to negotiate these, you know, because it's not my opinion, it's Department of Interior or Ship Hall, what they think is acceptable.
Before you move on to the interior, can you give a general opinion or assessment on the exteriors overall, the, the stonework, the pointing, the structure of the exterior?
The structure is in very good shape for its age. We found minimal, uh, evidence of any kind of structural problems, settlements or anything. Uh, and that's very positive for a building, especially in our neck of the woods, we all know there's potential problems underground all the time around here. Um, there are some areas where there's some deterioration, there's pictures later that'll show you some of the basement and that that has that. But they're not in a sense of looking at a building where you were even on the verge of something like condemning the building or anything. The exterior problems like the stone and the roofing are because those materials have reached an age where they need the extra maintenance or to be replaced, kind of thing. I mean roofs, slate roofs are great, but they don't last three hundred years either. So that's normal. Will it continue to cause problems? Yes, if they're not repaired, it's going to cause significant problems because the more, we all know, the more water gets in the building, the more damage it's causing to what's behind those walls. So you need to stop that, that's pretty simple. The problem is, it's not where you just do a little bit of an area because it's not located in one area, it could be a piece here, a piece everywhere, and tomorrow it'll be just the next piece. So we looked at it as if you're going to do it again, that's that scaffolding story. You're going to do it, they all should be repointed, we should have the right things, the flashing should be done. Because once we stop water, you've got a building that definitely will last another hundred years. Water's the worst, you know, case in a building that doesn't belong where it's going. Once we do that, then the interiors can be done safely, you know, in a sense, because there's no sense doing anything interior if we still have leaks, still have water coming in.
So the biggest priority with the exterior then, if you had to rank it, would be the roof?
The exterior being the stone and the roof, the roofing, the slate roofing, I guess it's probably, if you cut it up into smaller pieces, it would be the stone and the slate roofing.
But the stone is basically
Probably covers ninety-nine percent, ninety percent of all the leaks, all right? There's a few around some windows, there's a few around some other areas, but they're not the ones that can't be fixed easily.
But the main body of the building, which is the stonework, obviously, is basically repointing.
Repointing in, in most of the areas, but there's some broken ones, there's some loose ones.
Right.
Uh, when you do that though, the roofing and the stone work together because there's areas where there needs to be flashing. That is tucked into the stone and the roofing, that's a big part of the water. Um, I don't know if it's in this presentation, but it should be in the book. There's areas where there's no flashing and all you see is a stone and a brick behind it. So obviously a lot of water is working its way in there, that flashing has to be replaced. Uh, the tower itself has similar things, but the tower also introduces probably some other materials because there's some stone columns up there, the granite columns, there's a lot of metal up there. Terracotta, or not terracotta, but cast iron and other sheet metals. So they need to be done because that's also reducing water in the building. So when you think of the exterior, it should be everything. Obviously, there's areas if we have to look at, you know, alternates to try to look at the budget, there's probably areas that can be done second or third, and that's how we will look at it.
The, the glass or whatever it is up in the tower, is that plexiglass?
I'm sorry?
What's up in the tower, the glass colored glass, I think?
It's just colored glass.
That's all, is it glass or is it plexiglass or what is?
From all indications, it's the, uh, there was, all indications, there was never a clock there.
Okay.
Everybody keeps calling it a clock tower, but there was never a clock there. And there was a rose window up there that probably was removed because the wooden frames deteriorated from, I'll say, lack of maintenance or because of the height. And they put back aluminum. And then in the aluminum, when colored glass and the pattern was probably more of the style in the seventies, eight, early eighty, or late seventies, not replicating anything. We haven't yet found anything that tells us
Are we addressing that at all as far as trying to get back to the original appearance?
We would replace all the glass panes, but not the frame.
Okay.
And because it was done prior to the historic designation, we would assume that they'll accept that also. So that's more of that maintenance side, repair side, not a change side. Uh, talking about the structure, there are areas where there's a, you know, a lot of exposed brick, you know it, up on the fourth floor. Uh, there was only one or two areas where there were cracks and they were not significant. I mean, they're, they're visible, but they were probably, could have been there ten years after the building was finished, but nobody ever noticed them. And I'm sure when they did renovations, they didn't consider them to be important enough to do anything significant with them, maybe. So we're not doing much more either than just repointing them. There's no indication that it's caused by another settlement because none of the floors or any other problems are there, so that's what I meant by a good sign. Um, we looked at things like stairs and exiting and other than some handrail questions that today, most of this would be filled in. The stairs are adequate, they exit properly. Uh, maybe some signage has to be relooked at as far as getting in and out of them, but they're pretty good, so that's a plus. Toilet rooms are adequate, they meet the requirements as far as the number of toilet rooms and fixtures. One limitation, but again, that wasn't necessarily what the scope was about, was that there's only one handicap. So would that be something in the positive? That has to be looked at. Uh, but they're, you know, I mean, you know them every day, yes, they're dated or aged, but they're not deficient, all right? Plumbing was generally in good shape all around the board, all right? Mechanical was in good shape with the exception of the distribution. But the equipment in the mechanical room, the boiler room, the outside equipment is decent shape. Um, the biggest change would be that we suggested that, I mean, on the efficiency side, that the system be changed if you're going to re-pipe it. It'd be changed to a four-pipe system, which means you can have heating and cooling almost simultaneously. Instead of now, it has to be shut down, switched over type of thing. So you can't do it if we have a sixty or seventy day string of days and in February or March, you can't fix that in the system without shutting everything down. So if we're going to do new piping, we figured you should just put in the four pipes instead of two pipes. But the equipment would be the same.
And then your piping, that's
Yeah, we'll look at pictures, the piping is one of the, one of the interior priorities because it's already, there's a lot of leaks happening around the building. There's a few areas in finishes, obviously some carpeting, a lot of it has just simply got to a point where it should be replaced anyway. Uh, some areas like this that might be showing a little bit of unevenness in the floor, but it's not consistent everywhere. It could just be some tile or something. Those are areas that would all be taken care of when new carpeting was done to level it and smooth it out. There are some signs of places where water is getting in behind the stone and you can see that's what's causing all this weight on the walls. We would fix that on the outside. It probably will still look like that even after that because it takes a while to get that out of the wall and cleaning it, but at least we know we've stopped it. This is an indication that the water is getting in there. That's why it started. Same with the ceilings. A lot of places where there's roof leaks in the ceiling, affecting the ceiling tiles, we need to get to the point where the leak is before we worry about the ceiling tiles. And then we budget it in to replace all ceiling tiles. Same with other places where there's water coming down and affecting, you know, through the floor, the carpeting. It all starts with that outside envelope again, that's we button that up, all right? Here you can see where it's actually coming through the old plaster that's above the drop seal. Uh, I think this is in the basement where water down there is coming in. Um, and it's, it's deteriorated to the point where the moisture under the tile has softened the material to the point where traffic over it has busted it up and breaking it up. Not an unusual condition in the basement area and easy to fix, so. The same here. Uh, a lot of the same things around windows where we talked about stones where the mortar might be missing is allowing water to get in behind the stone, behind, at the edge of the window. It obviously shows up on the interior. That's not a recent problem, that's probably been happening a while. That's, I think, in the basement also, so it's probably one of those storage rooms that just doesn't get attention, all right? Not as obvious, but this is one of those areas where there's a little bit of structural work to be done. The type of floor system at that time was, uh, it was a steel channel that the concrete was formed top and bottom of. So the channel is part of the slab. It's not really under the slab supporting it, it's part of the slab, it's integral to the slab. So if you cut a hole and then sometimes that deteriorates around it and that's really all that is, somebody cut, that was probably a steam line or something in the past. Now they just use for some conduit and, and IT cable. But it, it's an indication of some areas that should be patched because it only gets worse. And, but they're not significant enough that you would say, nobody should be above that space. We didn't see anything that deteriorated to the point where it made a floor unsafe or anything like that. Same with, that's a window vent. A window vent that was filled in because it was probably drafty, all right? It's in one of the restrooms. Um, a lot of piping, a lot of extra piping that may not even be used anymore. We think a lot of it is just old steam lines. Sure, at one point, the building was on city steam and that was the primary system. And then in the eighties, it got switched over to the newer equipment, which is what's there now, or the system that's there now. And a lot of it was just never replaced because it was just inaccessible or it was going to just, you know, cheaper, leave it in place, so we need to look at it. Uh, we didn't see any clear indication of it, but nobody's tested everything in the building, so.
So a gray is working on that?
Yeah. Well, yeah, that has to be looked at and test. Um, what is indicative of what it could have been was these elbows, which had been removed. That's usually where it was highly suspect because it was mixed as a paste and put on. This would have been probably better shape, but it could still have a small amount in these coverings. The wrap that went around that fiberglass or that, that cellulite that was in here. So it looks like maybe some of it was taken care of because the most evident area like these elbows and that was already missing. Can I say that for sure? No. And can I say that's every case or just this case? That's the problem. So it does need to be tested. More condition, you can see how it's rusted and pitted. These are in the basement, so a lot of that is just because of moisture. Handicap accessible. There's a few pieces of equipment, this is one of the older water heaters, but I think the other ones are all relatively new. So the plumbing, like I said, is not significant in a sense of, there's not too many of this happening. Uh, but you can see that, that's pretty much where it should be replaced, all right? Same on the electrical, the main distribution on the electrical, uh, is down in that sub-basement. And it's most likely from moisture in that basement that's caused all of this. But you can see the possibility that there's been other places where there's water and, you know, water and electricity don't, right? So our recommendation in the report is to replace this with an outdoor switchgear that can stand in that kind of environment. So it's not that it's got to change and move and take room away from somebody, it's just, we know the environment, put in something that's going to last in that space, just like this was sitting outdoors, all right? But it does need to be replaced. There's other places where these wire molds were added in the seventy-nine, eighty renovations. And just over the years, it just, you know, I won't say it's anybody's fault, it gets away from it. There's conditions where this is not really conducive to changes in adding, you know, taking out devices. And after a while, there's something that's broken and, you know, it's the right wire way, one side of it is power, like usually the bottom here is the power and this is the IT, the data. And at that time, that was state-of-the-art. This has to be looked at too because same issues like this should be fixed. Even if this isn't replaced, they just have to be looked at, so we included that. And there's other cases where the same thing happens. Uh, you can see a lot of conduits and, and electrical cables going down through the floor. The right way is that the opening through the floor should be sealed so that you get a barrier between each floor, you know, as far as fire and smoke and everything. After a while, it just gets out of control and there's one more hole and another hole and another hole, so we looked at that. There's obviously also a lot of wire management work that could be done just to make them, you know, more effective in there, efficient. We did not look at the IT side of this though, all right? Because you already have a department to do that. And there's other places, this is in the basement by that switchgear where the cables that are feeding panels on various floors is actually open. I mean, it's a wire way, but the covers are not there anymore. That's a safety violation if more than anything, but it also adds to more deterioration if you keep getting all that moisture in the box. Any questions before we, any other interior or exterior or?
So the, in the interior, the most pressing thing is piping?
Piping. Um, most pressing from a, a maintenance and function and, and, uh, operational standpoint would be the piping on the systems. Whether it stays a two-pipe and you deal with the shutout, the shutdown and switch over, or you put in the four-pipe, that's just a cost issue. That's probably one of the things on the heating side, the cooling side. Uh, there's some ventilation, I think a couple of fans in some of the toilet rooms weren't operating, you know, those kinds of things, but they're not significant issues, it's the piping issue, all right? On the electrical side though, also it's some of that electrical gear and some of those safety issues. On the efficiency side, changing out fixtures is a big plus. So we recommend a changing out the fixtures, uh, because they should be relooked at anyway. And putting in LED type fixtures or something. But that could be one of those delayed, you know? It's able to do that, it's just a matter of a little more energy, but.
Okay, thank you.
There wasn't any other structural issues that are, I mean, there's a few, but they're not driving the interior work. Uh, we did see that there's going to possibly be some, some, uh, interior significant areas from the historic side. And that could be the main stair, the council chambers and the governor's room because they still retain some of the character of the original building. Even though there's paint and different things that were added and a new, you know, podium and stuff was put in, there's still a lot of feature that's still intact. And so we have to talk about the interiors, that may be the only place that we get something. But because it wasn't in the application, we really don't know if they're going to be that strict about it. But I don't think our intentions would be to change it wholesale, you know, take out that grand stair and everything. But we'd have to look at it. If we want to do anything like change in the flooring, they may have a say about what we put back. You know, because that tile is definitely seventies and eighties, you know, that cory tile.
Yeah.
That's, that's where there's an unknown about tripping the historic side. What do they consider significant enough to do?
It doesn't seem like there's a lot of significant damage. I mean, once you seal the envelope, obviously, the, the outside of the building.
Yes.
Uh, you're going to mitigate all the problems we're having now with the interior because a lot of it is surface, it's drop ceilings, it's some plaster repair.
Correct.
Uh, it doesn't seem to be a lot of damage interior-wise based on, on the pictures at least.
No, if we stop the exterior leaks in the roofing and we take care of like the piping leaks because they're contributing a lot of places too, then it's, I would say, more cosmetic.
Right.
Um, and then it's going to be more, and that's a good, I guess, in a sense, a good side of this because the interiors aren't all historic either.
Right.
We have the freedom to do that, which is a little bit more like what's here today because it was already done before the application. Yeah, they're not going to make you undo and go back, you know, that many years unless you disturb it. So I think if we do like flooring on the stair, there might be some review of that. Flooring in a room that maybe like this, there could be, but one of the office spaces, you know, permits or somebody? No, it's already beyond that point, it's already going to change. Things like doorways, you know, with the Gothic arch, that's going to be more critical, more interest to them not to start changing that character. The main corridors have that character. The open stairs from second, third floor, the balconies, that kind of thing. And I don't think that was the intention to start, you know, we're just looking at them in kind, repairing or upgrading in kind. Okay? I don't know if you can see, maybe you need to. Uh, what we were asked to do and what are, we have a survey form that we use and it's in the book that allows our field people to go in the book, that allows our field people to go through and pick and see everything that's in that trade. And we categorize those in then priorities one, two, three, four. Very simple, it's not meant to be exact in any one way, but it's looking at, just as you're asking, those things that are priority one are the things that stabilize the building or safety issues or whatever. And then it works its way down to items that become more cosmetic, regular maintenance and upgrade. So, you can see that's why there's a bulk of the time up in the, or cost up in the phase one. That's where all the roofing and the stonework and the windows are. And then it drops down to minimal when you get down into the phase, or phase four or priority four, only because in a sense of interiors, those costs are a lot cheaper, you know, replacing ceiling tiles versus doing other things. We're not in, if we had found a lot of code issues, that might have been in a, you know, priority two or three, but we're not there either. So, that's why most of it is in the phase one or priority one.
When I was reading through the report, you mentioned in some spots seeing mold, and I know you just talked about testing. Can you just expand upon that?
When we, I'm trying to remember how it came about, when we were surveying spaces, looking to find out why we had areas that were leaking, to find out if it was piping or some other reason, we saw areas and, to probably keep it very simple, we saw areas that had black surfaces, you know, dark surfaces, which is first indication to, you know, a non-industrial hygienist that you have something that doesn't belong there. And then we identified that area. We only found two areas that were visible to us in the basement, and they were way in the back where the whole holding cells were, which is not unusual in a sense of that space. And then there were some areas over, I think, over here at the backside of the governor's room, which was definitely caused by a window or leak, like we saw the masonry that had the white effervescence on the inside that had been coming in, probably in the wall cavity behind the plaster, and it finally worked its way through. So, is it possible there's more of those? Yes. We can't tell until somebody does that testing. And even then, they can, unless we are stripping the whole building of all its plaster, you may still not know. The good thing is it's caught in the middle. So, until we open it up, but that would have to be part of the procedure, open the wall up, test it type of thing, to make sure that it isn't, because that would be a first step before the work like putting a new pipe or conduit would have to be done. So, it's a step-by-step process. Can it all be removed and prevented? I think if we stop the exterior, it's going to stop the interior. It's a question that'll dry it out and everything. Once we keep it in the wall, it's not really an exposure.
Two questions on the costs, and if you can't answer them, please tell me, because it is on the application that was signed by the business administrator. There's a line item, allowance for historic of one hundred and ninety-five thousand. Is that what we talked about where, for instance, the slate has to be replaced with slate? Or is this something else?
It's for that and interiors. We tried to price the exterior or budget the exterior work, assuming what we expected they would want to do, such as replacing the slate with slate instead of another composite material or simulated slate. So, that was built into the line items. Did we predict or can we predict what they want to do at the entrances or some other areas that since eighty or eighty-one might have changed again, and they're going to want, if we're going to have to do work there? And the same on the interior. Can we predict what they're going to do with these corridors and stuff? So, that's where that's for.
So, that variance is...
The bulk of it, I think, is in the exterior cost already.
Okay. And then also on that same page, in the application, there's a line item for fees and soft costs. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Uh, yeah. Right now, it's a, for no better term, it's a placeholder in there. It's going to be for design fees. Somebody eventually is going to do the design and the engineering for the systems. I can't predict who's, what numbers are going to come out. It's also going to be for testing. We talked about testing for like mold and different things that'll happen, and some of that'll happen before construction. Some of it can happen during construction, we built into the construction side. It'll also be for expenses with reviews for Ship-O and Department of Interior. They're not necessarily going to charge an exorbitant amount, but there sometimes are soft costs or small costs that go along with that for reviews, for them to travel and look at the building or something. It's also going to cover, and I'm not sure where Dave is going with funding, but it could also cover audit fees. It could also be for some accounting or other fees that have to be done for applications that come in from the design first. And a lot of those could be in, that's why I said a placeholder, because a lot of those could also be pushed into the construction side. Alright? So, it's not a number, it's a starting point.
And one last question, just so, I took some notes going through this. Am I correct that these items I'm going to list off are not part of this proposal? So, new windows, new bathrooms, any type of environmental remediation of asbestos or lead, and IT upgrades? They're not included?
Not at all.
Is there anything else not included that...
Security. Or security changes, whether it be...
With that said, how comfortably are you with the figure ten point three with the E.S. off...
It's consistent with budgets we've seen and used before, but I'll be very honest, in a project like this with the renovations, I don't care if it's a hundred and thirty years old or thirty years old, renovations have historic reasons to say there's something nobody expected, alright? This obviously has other parties that are going to tell us things to do, not necessarily that we're going to work against, but they're going to tell us that, no, to keep the designation, I want you to do this, and it's pretty hard to say no, because they hold the controls on the purse strings is the money you're getting if it's got federal, you know, strings on it. So, I can't say that we can do that. Those are the things that could happen. This is consistent with the numbers we used on the courthouse renovation at a square-foot basis, in the scope. Is it exactly the same? No. You know, there was a lot more interiors that were kept historic in the courthouse than the city all the way.
We are a little over on time. Do any of my colleagues have any additional questions before we wrap up?
I just have one. I'm not sure if you can do this because of the historic nature of the building, but was there any thought, or have you ever seen a building, like a municipal building, move in the area of making it green, like solar panels, things like that, for energy efficient?
Yeah, the Department of Interior has a program, has an incentive to do that. I mean, they encourage that, and they know that's what everybody's doing these days, so obviously, they're not against it, you know? But it goes back to some of their primary reasons. You can do that, but it can't look, you can't start hanging them all around the tower, you know?
Right.
That kind of thing. So, if they can be done and satisfy their requirements to keep it inconspicuous, is a good word, yes, you can cover that roof. And in this case, you could cover the flat roof because nobody's going to see it except for a few high rises, you know? They're more worried about the street presence. So, that could probably be done. In that sense, we didn't include anything like that, but that could be done. We'd have to look at it, whoever designs that, we'd have to look at the payback for that. But it could be grant money to do that, and the great payback may not be as big a deal, but obviously, it's there. Can we do enough on the interior or exterior building to meet all those levels that a new building today would meet? We'd probably have to strip every wall inside the building and re-insulate them and go beyond what they were originally built to be to get to those levels. That's not practical, obviously, nor would, you know, it'd be probably cost-effective. Can we do things with the windows like we talked about? We can do it until we deteriorate that product. So, if we put storms on these windows to make them more energy efficient, that's just shortening the life cycle of that window. So, there's a lot of give and take that has to be with that. The roofing is the easiest place, obviously, because if we replace roof, we add more insulation.
And what would your recommendation be? I don't know if you can give a recommendation on this, but you mentioned priorities. So, what if the city were to, instead of doing it all at once, piecemeal it and say, okay, here's priority one, we're going to do this, but we're going to leave priority four and five go until, like kind of a pay-as-you-go type, that thing?
Well, the exterior can definitely be done. A lot of buildings do just the exterior anyway, and we've seen them in this area a lot. I think on the interior, it just gets a little bit more complicated if we have to do things that disrupt the building or a floor. We think of it more like a floor, probably. If I have to do enough work on the second floor, that's going to disrupt first or third floor or fourth floor or whatever, then it may be inconvenient to do it that way, and it may not, you know, be practical and might take some temporary work. Or you might just simply be doing it on a premium time and all those costs, so each one of them has to be looked at. The bigger changes, you could start the piping in places and replace what it is there. It's only a risk of the connection to the old, you know? That's all. But is that worth the risk? Sure. So, it has to be looked at. There's no one solution, and nobody should dictate the solution. It really should be what's best for the operations. And I'm sure there's room to do that.
Okay, thank you.
We thank you again for coming in. We really appreciate it.